I'll call the meeting to order, and if everyone could please rise, the Honorable Brandon McCullough is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Good evening and welcome to the August 22nd, 2022 study session of Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,950th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting to take place on September 7th, 2022. We do not have Council, we do not have Council Vice President Laura Toy with us this evening. She is under the weather, and Jim Jolly is, President Jolly is at a previously scheduled engagement that he was not able, commitment that he was not able to rearrange to be here this evening. And we have Councilmember Donavick, who's been called back to some active duty, present via Zoom, which is permitted under state law. I do not have any announcements, but at this time, we will go to audience communication. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. All right, seeing none, we will move ahead. Council, do you have any announcements that you'd like to make prior to commencement of our agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed with this evening's agenda. This meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken. The council members will however, however, offer either one resolution or combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions may include an approving, denying, or referring an item to committee or a city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Wednesday, September 7th, where they will officially be voted on. And just to note, Monday, September 5th is Labor Day, so as is our practice when a meeting, a Monday meeting, a meeting that would normally be on Monday falls on a holiday, we move the meeting to a Wednesday evening generally. If you would like to participate in any of the items that are on this evening's agenda, please approach the podium, one of the podiums on either side of the room when the item is called, and you'll be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make remarks and initial, initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience and city council. So please come to the podium when the item is called. And when, when it's your turn, I will acknowledge you and ask you to come forward, and you will please state your name and address for the record, that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting. It will also let the council and those watching on TV or via streaming know who you are. So with that, we move to our new business portion of the agenda, beginning with item number one. This is a block party. The petitioner offered by Lewis and Kimberly Palmer to be held Saturday, September 10th, 2022, from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Wadsworth Avenue from Boston Post West until it dead ends. Is the petitioner here this evening? All right, please come to the podium. And if only one of you is going to speak, only one of you needs to introduce yourself, but if both want to speak, that's fine too, so.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Palmer. My address is 11866 Boston Post Street, Livonia, Michigan.
And my name is Lewis Palmer, 11866 Boston Post Street, Livonia, Michigan.
All right, and is this an annual, is this an annual block party, or is this a new event for your subdivision or neighborhood?
It was new last year, and went over so well, we, everyone clamored for us to do it again this year, so. That's what we're here to do, and we tried to keep it on the same weekend, so it seemed to work out really well.
Fantastic. Council, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent if there are no objections. You guys look like you had a blast the last time and look like this one's even going to be better, so I'm not going to stand in your way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and are you offering that for consent?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going out of consent, which means you don't need to come back to the next meeting because it's non-controversial, and we put all the consent agenda items together, and they're voted on as one item. So you're all set? So that's it?
Thank you.
Enjoy your party, and thank you for being engaged and active citizens who clearly work for the betterment and the joy and, you know, just great neighborhood that you live in. And I'm sure you are appreciated by all of your neighbors, so thank you very much.
It's good to get to know your neighbors.
Certainly is.
And you are all invited.
Well, thank you.
Yes, we'd love to have you come.
Thank you.
That's, that's one of the things that makes Livonia a great city to live in, is the community.
It is.
Yes, it's a beautiful, it's beautiful.
Well, thank you. And I have to tell you, I will be Michigan State, watching my son in the marching band, and so I'm not allowed to be anywhere else on, on game days when we're home, so.
Understand that, I'm a woman, I.
Hopefully, hopefully, some of, some of my colleagues will be able to.
Hopefully, we'll see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a block party. This is from Deana Andre, and I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. And if I'm not, please correct me when you come to the podium, to be held Sunday, September 25th, 2022, from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the corners of Arthur, Leon, and Elmira Streets, north to the corner of Elmira and Yale Streets. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Kuhn. I'm at 35666 Elmira Street, Livonia, Michigan. I'm here on behalf of Deana. I also do not know how to pronounce her last name, so you're not alone there.
And is this an annual, or is this a first time?
This is the first time we are extending it to the block. Historically, she's had it at her house for just the surrounding houses, but we've decided this year we'd like to extend it to our full block.
Great. Council?
Madam President.
Councilmember Burr.
I'll offer this for approving for consent if there's no objection.
I, I just have a quick question for you real quick, and not to put you on the spot, but I, I'm pretty familiar with that area. I used to live right on with Chicago there at Arthur, and where Mitten come together. And I'm, I'm wondering, are you having it on the, on the main road there, right in front of the old Garfield School? Is that the plan? Or is it from Garfield School north on Arthur there? Because I know that's a very high-traffic area coming down Parkdale.
Not in front of the school. Where Arthur kind of curves into Elmira, that's where we intend to block it off.
Okay, so it's at the, it's, it's north of Parkdale?
Yes.
And, okay, so it starts at Elmira and then runs north along?
Yes.
Okay, along Leon, is it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify that because that's a very high-traffic area, and I was more concerned for people's safety. Is that, how is that going to be blocked off? At what's your plan? Is it bringing in city?
The city barricades. So I guess that was part of a question that Deana and myself had. So when we block it off, or we kind of follow this, do we have to block the entirety of the block where we're having the party? Or can we just block within a few areas of some houses?
You're generally, and we have the city attorney here, and we also have our, one of our fine police captains here. I believe it's up to your discretion. You need permission if it's a main road, right? But if it is a road within a subdivision, if you will, I, I believe that generally, we, we leave it to the discretion of the people holding the party. And you can get the barriers from DPW. Is that still correct, Mr. Rushlow? Okay, and I just want to thank Councilmember Burr and Morgan, in all seriousness, for asking these questions. He was a Livonia police officer for 25 years, so whenever someone comes here and talks about what they're doing at any particular block in the city, he, he knows exactly where they're talking about. So, good questions, and thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. It would just, it, may I?
Please.
I just wanted to make sure that if you're going to do that, please block off Elmira Street at Leon.
Yes.
Right there. I would recommend that you do it in its entirety. Make sure that that is closed off. You don't want anybody squeezing by there and driving through your block party. As far as the other end, if you're going to just go like 10 houses down, I'm not sure what your plan is, you may want to make sure that that's completely blocked off also.
Okay.
Okay, because we don't, we don't want any injuries, and that, I know that area that people just fly down there, so, okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, so it's on consent, which means you don't have to come back either. It goes on the consent agenda. It's voted on with a number of other items, so you're all set. And at the next meeting on Wednesday, September 7th, we will officially approve it, but you're all set.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, item number three is a block party request from Wafa Dinaro to be held on Saturday, October 1st, 2022, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Huff Street between Kingsbury and Ladywood Streets. Good evening.
Hi, thanks for having me. So Wafa Dinaro, 15680 Huff Street. I'll, I've heard the question, so this is the first time we're having this block party. We have a lot of new families in our neighborhood, and we figured this would be a good way to get everybody in one place to get to know each other. There's a lot of young kids, so we intend on having like a food truck, cotton candy, some bounce houses, and some music. So we're, we're excited about it, and hopefully, this can become an annual thing.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On this one, definitely council should be getting an invite, because this one sounds like it's going to be a good one.
Yeah, you guys are all welcome to join us.
They're all good ones.
They're all good ones, for sure. Not discounting anything, but I have high hopes for this one. I will be happy to offer an approving for consent, unless you want to come back to the.
I do not want to come back. I love seeing you guys, but I'd rather see at football practice and watch my kids.
Two meetings in a row.
Yeah, I know, right?
All right, well, you know the process, and Wafa will have to check if that's not a Michigan State home game. If I'm invited to, I'm going to stop by because I grew up at 37860 Ladywood, which is right on the corner. Yep, so this is my old stomping grounds. We never had block parties, but we did, we did have bike parades and, you know, other things. But had there been block parties, the McIntyre girls would have been there and not ever gotten out of the bounce house, probably.
Awesome.
Anyway, this is great.
Yeah, well, you guys are all welcome. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks so much. All right, item number four, a block party to be held on Saturday, October 8th, from noon until 9:00 p.m. on Sherwood between Woodside and Park Lane with a rain date of Sunday, October 9th, 2022, and this is from Lauren Gru.
Hi, my name is Eric Gru, 15612 Woodside. Lauren's my wife. This is the second year we've had the block party. Went over really well last year. Everybody had a blast, and we're just continuing it again this year. So the plan is to block off Sherwood between Woodside and Park Lane.
Okay. Council?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I've looked at the map. Everything looks like it'll work fine. I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you. Councilmember Burr, good with this? I mean, Morgan, sorry. The other Scott. You good with this one? Okay, all right. It's been offered for consent, so again, you're all set. It will be officially approved on September 7th, but you don't have to come back. And thank you, like we've indicated everybody else, for being citizens and neighbors who work to build strong neighborhoods and keep Livonia as a welcoming and fun place for everyone. So thank you very much, and have a great party.
Thank you.
And are we invited?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because I do not want to miss this one either.
Exactly. Good, good call, yes. All right, item number five is a request for designation as a nonprofit organization. This comes from Christian A. Lob, from Bator Lob Attorneys and Counselors at Law on behalf of Life Center Incorporated. Is required by the state of Michigan to obtain a charitable gaming license to allow a raffle fundraiser in the future. Good evening.
Hi, so I don't see our attorney here, but my name is Samantha, and I am the Program Director with Life Center. And we are a nonprofit agency, and we provide services to individuals with developmental disabilities. And we provide staffing assistance in group homes and supportive settings where they live on their own, but require assistance. So we are trying to get a poker license right now to help offset some costs to us, help individuals with dental and things that they can't afford. We have done bingos and poker in the past, but it's been many years, so we need to update our license for that. So that's what we are hoping to get today.
Council?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, everything seems to be in order here. I'd be happy to offer approval or consent if there's no objection.
All right, so again, your item will be officially voted upon and approved at the September 7th meeting, but you don't need to come back.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm new to this, so after December, or September 7th, so I will be notified, or how does that work?
You won't be notified.
Okay.
You, you can just know that on September 7th, you, you might want to tune in and watch the meeting on streaming or read the minutes. It's very rare that anything is even pulled off consent. It's, it's even rarer for something to be pulled off the consent agenda and then not voted to, to be, for approval.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you guys very much.
And if you're paying your attorney, make sure he doesn't charge you for this meeting.
I know, right?
All right?
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Item number six, this is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from sole source provider. This comes to us from the Division of Police to replace the Police Department's Firearms Training Simulator, known as FATZ, from budgeted funds. Good evening, Captain Yan.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of various city departments. Yes, we're requesting the replacement of our current FATZ machine that is outdated. Our former firearms training simulator is 18 years old, and the operating system in which it was ran by through Windows XP has ceased to be supported earlier this year. And quite frankly, it's just been used up, and we're in need of a new one. And without the ability to install these updates, the device doesn't work. So we're recommending the purchase of a new firearms training simulator from a company called Vertra Inc., and we're requesting a waiver of the city's sealed process based on our research. And this is the only manufacturer for the equipment and software that simulates returned fire consequences, which means the officer will know that if they were in a firefight, if they actually were hit also. Vertra is the only company that can produce and sell a specifically triggered training cartridge for this TASER line products, which we use for our tasers, and that's through Axon. So our training will be with the equipment that we use for this system and not a generic item to simulate equipment that an officer uses. This is the only company that can produce and sell this, and it's specifically designed, and it's affordable for the converts. We'll use our own pistols. We're able to put different barrels in there that shoot basically lasers, and the machine is able to read where those hits would be, should we be involved in a shooting situation with this particular training equipment. The request to purchase, the purchase for this item is $56,280.54, which we're using from budgeted funds.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan, I got it right?
Yes, I would like to approve this and put this on the consent agenda if there's no objection.
I see no objections, so we're good on that. And I do have a comment, if I may. I guess I can give myself permission, since I'm the chair tonight, to comment. I, as, as many know, anyone who's ever talked to me knows I'm a proud graduate of the Citizens Police Academy. As many are tired of hearing me talk about it, but I didn't do real well in the simulator. I believe that I killed the innocent person and got myself killed. I believe that is because of the antiquated system. So when, when the new system is there, I would like to be invited back to show that indeed, it was not the operator's fault. It was due to the obsolescence.
If I may, Councilwoman?
Please.
There's some points with this system, as we've explained to you guys when you were in the Citizens Police Academy, but this particular system is the closest thing to real-time life or death incidents. And I mean, it reverts back to muscle memory, and when something of that nature comes into effect, sometimes you're just operating through what you've already learned. So this system won't only save lives, it's designed to save our officers' lives, but also the lives of the people that we encounter to where we can de-escalate. I mean, this is vital training for our officers so that they can make the right decision every time.
In all seriousness, we don't, I don't want to interrupt the captain.
I'm good.
In all seriousness, this is a really impressive system, and it was clear a few years ago, when we did go through it, that it was not state-of-the-art, but it, it still got the job done. But these are, and with every new generation, they're more and more realistic, right?
Yep, this one's actually portable, too. So the room that you were in, we can actually move this into where you guys had your classroom.
Okay.
We can take it down to the range and put it, you know, if we have something going in one, one space, we can utilize a different area with this system, so.
Excellent, excellent.
A lot better technology.
I, I think if, if maybe there's a way that we could, when you, when you get this, right, share some details about how it's going and just be interested to hear. But, but this really is, and this is in line with all of the training and the investments Livonia makes in not only getting the bad guys, but not getting the good guys, and to your point, de-escalation, using the least force possible, and also in protecting the health and welfare of our, and safety of our officers, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, item number seven, request for authorization to purchase one 2022 Dodge Charger utilizing the state of Michigan bid pricing. This, too, comes source from the Division of Police to replace an unrepairable vehicle from budgeted funds. Captain?
Yes, back July 14th, one of our newer police vehicles, a Ford Interceptor SUV, was involved in a traffic crash at Five Mile and Merriman, I believe it was. But the vehicle was deemed unrepairable, so Michigan Municipal Risk Management is going to pay that vehicle price of $31,800 back to us, and we're looking to purchase a new 2022 Dodge Charger to replace that vehicle from LaFontaine, I guess Ford or Dodge, wherever they're located, but that vehicle's going to cost $34,273. And the replacement equipment and the outfitting will be covered by MMRMA also. So we're requesting a waiver of the city's sealed bid process based on the fact that the Police Department's association with the Michigan, state of Michigan bid system and consortium, so this all falls right into line with that. Basically, we're just replacing one vehicle with another.
Madam Chair?
Councilmember Morgan?
I'll offer an approving for consent.
Any, and I should have asked before if there are any council comments or comments from the audience. I forgot to do that.
No objection to Mr. Morgan's approval. I just wonder, in light of the recent decision, I'm not wonder, I'm just going to make a statement. In light of the recent decision by a Dodge to retire the Charger and the Challenger, this might actually go up in value over time.
It could.
So this is an investment by the city right here. I'm a little bit biased based on my previous job, so.
All right, none of you have ever seen the way we drive.
All right, we are, we are all set, and I also just wanted to thank you for including in the packet the information about the disposition and financial, financial ramifications of the salvage choice and the MMRMA claim. That's helpful, so thank you for putting that in, Captain. All right, good night.
Thank you.
Stay safe, although you're welcome to stay.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, item number nine is a request to purchase, no, item, we're on item, item number eight. Request for additional appropriation expenditure. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works for emergency repair in the City Hall Annex hallway from budgeted funds. Good evening, Mr. Rushlow.
Good evening, everyone. Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works for the city. My mic's a little high here. Excuse me. This, this incident happened back in late February, earlier this year, during a deep freeze part of the winter where a water pipe in the hallway connecting City Hall to the old annex burst. Right, it, it's a fire suppression sprinkler line. Stagnant water tends to freeze a little quicker. So when that burst, it caused some pretty significant flooding and structural damage to that part of the hallway. We were fortunate enough to have a single restoration on call. We had previously done some emergency repairs for the city at a couple of facilities at Greenmead, as well as at the Department of Public Works complex in our own building. They were able to come out and do the repair fairly quickly, and completed the repairs in April, and got us their final invoice here in, at the end of June. So in accordance with the Livonia Code ordinances, we are bringing this before you as a notification of this emergency and requesting that city council authorize the payment to Sun Glow Restoration Services in the amount of $27,903.55 for all materials, equipment, and labor that was necessary to perform these emergency repairs in the Annex hallway.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair to Mr. Rushlow. Just a quick question. All the numbers seem in order. Just going forward, I'm assuming you guys beefed up the insulation on these sprinkler heads?
This one was interesting. I asked the same question, of course, you know, looking back at what, what caused this? Why did this one spot freeze? We hadn't had these issues before, and we actually found the, the root cause was when we, when there was a cable line ran through security system to the camera, when they punctured that and ran it through the outside of the building. Either the seal wasn't done well, or the seal came dislodged, so there was no seal. It was just cold air blowing right into that part of the building.
Let Mr. O'Neill up here.
So, I don't, yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just explaining our investigation. So we were able to seal that up very nice and tight and caulked and stop that cold air from coming in, so it should not be an issue in the future.
Thank you. I have, I'd offer an approving for consent.
All right, any comments? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number nine. This is a request to purchase one Superjet 1600 High Pressure Water Jetter through the Sourcewell Purchasing Program. This, too, comes source from the Department of Public Works Sewer Department through budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow?
Yes, thank you. This is a new jet truck. It's a scheduled replacement of an outdated jet truck that we use regularly in the department for, in, by the sewer division for routine preventive maintenance and cleaning of our sewer pipes throughout the city. The old truck is well past its life expectancy. That'll be disposed of through the auction process. This purchase will be made through the Sourcewell Purchasing, Purchasing Agreement at a discount rate of 5%. Plus, we're able to take advantage of some additional dealer discounts, which brings the total almost $40,000 below the list price. Funds were budgeted in, well, I guess we'll say it this way, funds were proposed for the 2023 fiscal year budget in the Water and Sewer Fund. We anticipate taking this delivery after December 1st, 2022. The reason we're here before you now, prior to the next fiscal year, is what we've been hearing through the vendor and through the industry of trying to get these types of vehicles, is there, there, there's not very, very many of them on the lot. We're actually getting hold of the last one that's available through this Sourcewell agreement. And if we didn't order it now, we'd be about two years out before we're able to, to get our hands on another one. So trying to be proactive, bringing this before you now, knowing we would not, in fact, get the vehicle until after December 1st of the new fiscal year, as it is. Oh, so the amount, sorry, excuse me. So, so it's our recommendation that the department, from the department, that council authorize the appropriation of these funds and an expenditure in the amount of $358,000 from North River Truck and Trailer to purchase this jet truck. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair?
Councilmember Burr?
And I don't have any questions. I think Mr. Rushlow presented it well. I was just pausing to see if somebody else did, but they don't, so I'll offer an approving for consent if there's no objection.
All right, seeing none, anyone from the audience? All right, Mr. Rushlow, that goes on the consent agenda, and I think you're going to stay up there for a little while longer. Item number 10 is, also comes to us from the DPW for the baseball diamond fencing replacement project from budgeted funds.
Yes, thank you. This fence replacement project includes removal and replacement of existing backdrop, backstop, excuse me, and dugout fencing at seven of our ball diamonds, as well as replacement of the players' benches at five of those ball diamonds. The project was publicly bid through Mitten, and bids were opened on July 12th, 2022. We had four contractors attend our mandatory pre-bid meeting. Only one submitted a bid, and that was received from Nationwide Construction Group. Their bid of $148,531.16 was below our project budget of $150,000. We, we had actually first went out for bid for nine locations. For replacement of backstops, we removed two of those locations to get that bid price down below what we had in budgeted funds to, to stay within the budget. So with that, and working with the vendor, it's our recommendation that council proceed to award this construction contract to Nationwide Construction Group for all labor materials and equipment necessary to complete the baseball diamond projects as identified in the bid documents in an amount not to exceed $148,531.16 from budgeted funds.
Councilmember Burr?
Just one question, Jacob. You said that there were four, four companies that attended the. the pre-bid meeting, but only one actually bid, do you have any ideas to why that was?
Um, you know, I, I was not at that meeting, I didn't do any follow-up myself, um, I can certainly check back with, uh, with Doug Moore, who handles parks, um, maintenance and see what-
It just strikes me as odd, I'm sure, I'm sure it's not odd, or there's probably a good reason for it, I'm just curious.
Yep.
Glad to hear that it came in lower than what we were expecting, so, um, I'll offer, under the circumstance, I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, item number eleven, this comes to us from the Department of Public Works also for the Civic Center Library atrium roof replacement from budgeted funds.
Thank you once again, um, Civic Center Library atrium roof is original to the nineteen-eighty-six construction of the Civic Center Library, um, if you've been in the library lately, you've noticed there are signs of active leaks that have been recognizable for quite some time with trashcans or buckets strategically placed throughout the atrium to help collect, uh, some of the water as it's dripping through the old glass atrium ceiling, so the department to address this has been working with our architect's team, um, at DLZ, and one of the members here, Lori, is in the audience as well, um, we, we were working with Lori and her team to determine what cost-effective solutions do we have for replacing this roof system, we know that an in-kind glass ceiling replacement, uh, is gonna be quite a bit more expensive and costly, um, and maybe not the best solution for, for the atrium, um, so we devised a couple of different options for, for metal roof-type systems, we explored those and reviews, reviewed those both with library staff as well as with the library commission, um, and through that whole process determined the lowest lifecycle cost, roof system would be a structural metal roofing, um, system with insulation, finished interior ceiling, and new high-efficiency LED lighting to, um, to really brighten up that space, um, and, and really, it also solves some of the problems they have now with relying a lot on daylight, if it's a dim gloomy day or an evening event, there's not enough light coming through, and the ceiling light that's there now doesn't really provide enough light to properly, um, illuminate that space, so the new high-efficiency LED lighting would be a big plus, uh, in that regard, so in order to proceed with the design and bidding, uh, of this project, um, we prepared an RFP, sent it out to our four architects, as you're familiar with the process that we do regularly for these types of projects, and DLZ, um, submitted the lowest fee proposal for the design services, um, so it's our recommendation to move forward with the designing, uh, bidding of this project to award the professional architectural services, um, contract supplement to DLZ, uh, through the previous QBS process that was approved by council back, um, in twenty-twenty, and, um, approve the funds in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for those, uh, services, we would also need to request that council approve an additional appropriation and expenditure of that same amount, seventy-five thousand, from the unexpendited fund balance of the library fund to cover those costs, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through the chair to Mr. Rushlow, um, looking at this, um, like I said, the, uh, previous meeting, um, we attended the library commission, there was a thing, a lot of things brought up, so I kinda, we, I know councilmember Donovan and myself kinda heard Cliff Notes version, I think this is wonderful, I think this is a good opportunity, especially for that library facility, the one question, I know this is probably going into the design and, and bid phase, but maybe just a recommendation, if it's possible, is try to design this thing, 'cause if I'm not mistaken, that roof faces south, doesn't it? It's a perfect opportunity potentially for a solar option, at least to maybe build it with the, the potential to house them, you know, there's enough grants and everything that are out there, and, uh, that might be a nice feature to pair it with the LEDs, to take some, uh, some electricity off the grid to save some funds, I do think it's a great thing, I know that, uh, the, the library itself and the patrons will be very happy not to have the Home Depot buckets, so, um, looking forward to seeing this design process, um, if there are no objections, I will be happy to offer an approving for consent.
Uh, councilmember Morgan?
Yes, I, I have a question, is there a warranty on this roof, how long does this thing last, and what is our?
On the, the one that's proposed?
Yes.
So when the new roofs installed with these metal, uh, roof systems, they're usually around a forty-year life expectancy.
And if something comes up in between that, where we have some issues, like we're currently having now, is that covered under that?
Uh, there, there is a manufacturer's warranty on that system as well, that would be covered, yes.
Okay, for, are we talking parts, or them to come and repair it?
You know, it depends, I mean, there's, there's a manufacturer warranty that's gonna be on the product, and then there's also, uh, many, not just manufacturer defects, but also labor, um, how it was built, um, the quality of the work that was done, so there's two different things in play, we have the, um, maintenance guarantee bond that's required by the contract for the contractor, as well as the, the manufacturer's warranty on the actual product.
And how don't, how long does that go by the, the, the people who are installing it?
The maintenance guarantee bond is typically a one-year warranty for their quality of work, um, that's one year from when we finish and accept the project, the manufacturer's warranty on material defect is much longer.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, councilmember McCullough.
Just to clarify, now, this is just an appropriation for the design and construction documents, so-
Yes.
You know, taking that, taking councilmember Morgan's, uh, words into consideration, making sure that whatever you guys do spec carries a long warranty for the metal standing seam, and hopefully can hold solar panels.
All right, offered on consent.
Thank you.
All right, uh, finally, item number twelve, award of bid, this two from the Department of Public Works for the Carl Sandberg Roof Replacement from the unexpected fund balance of the library fund.
Yes, thank you once again, and this is my final item for the evening, um, Sandberg Library Roof currently consists of a coal tar pitch roof system that's nearing the end of its serviceable life and is in need of replacement, the construction contract for the roof replacement was publicly bid through the mitten process, and bids were opened on August ninth, we had two bids that were received, and KJP Roofing was the lowest qualified bidder, um, I guess I should mention, I mentioned the existing system, the, the new system that would be put in would be a, um, uh, a seamless membrane system, um, with new flashing and details on all the edging for, um, for a new watertight, uh, system, um, their bid for that work was two hundred forty-three thousand five hundred dollars, that includes a twenty-five-year warranty, um, and we did add a five-thousand-dollar permit allowance, uh, to that amount as well, um, this was below both the design architect's opinion of construction costs, as well as our budget, um, so we are recommending adding a ten percent contingency to the expenditure, uh, just to handle any unknowns that may have occurred during construction through change orders, um, that may arise, so it's our recommendation, um, that council proceed to award a construction contract to KJP Roofing for all labor, labor, materials, and equipment necessary to complete the Carl Sandberg Roof Replacement as identified in the bid documents, in an amount not to exceed two hundred sixty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, uh, from budgeted funds.
Councilman McCullough.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through the chair to Mr. Rushlow, do you happen to know the spec on the membrane, or what mill, um, and product?
Um, y-
If not, is it something that?
Yeah, I could, I can get it to you for sure, let me see if I have it real quick in my notes, um-
With a twenty-five, I gotta think it's at least a sixty, or fifty, sixty.
I think we, I'm even trying to remember if we spec this one as PVC or TPO, but-
Okay.
It was one of the two, um, but I know we did, so we did give the option in the spec for a twenty or a twenty-five-year-
I seen that, you took the twenty-five, which is good.
-warranty, and we opted for the twenty-five, um, I, I'd have to get back to you, I can check on that-
No, that's fine, like I said, everything seems in order, is this something that you're looking to get done, this hopefully if approved right away?
It would be, yes, this is-
Awesome, um, and then, there was one, just one comment is, it always gets missed up, but it shows that it's the replacement of the rigid insulation, which adds our value, saving more energy costs for the library going forward, which is a good thing, uh, everything seems in order, I'll offer an approving on consent, just for purposes, if you could just let me know this for-
Yep, for sure, thank you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to ask, uh, councilmember McCullough, that that be taken off consent, um, we've had a lot of discussions in, in Livonia Vision Twenty-One about the direction of our libraries, and, and I'm never going to argue against expenditures, right, when they're needed to preserve buildings and, and the contents of the buildings, but, um, I would like to go back and look at Livonia Vision Twenty-One and review some of our discussions on the planned future of that library.
Yeah, I, I could get behind that, I know we do have the, uh, the subject matter of commit, uh, in infrastructure we can bring up.
Yep, we, we do, so, um, I have no objections to it, I, I just, I'd like it to go on consent.
May I ask, Ms. Russell, one last question?
Off of consent, off of consent.
I got one further question for Mr. Russell-
Please.
That's all right, through the chair, um, with this, I mean, obviously, we'll schedule the meeting pretty quick, is that detrimental to the timing, I know we're approaching August with getting the roof done, or?
With the, or, do you mean just putting it on regular, you know, I, I don't think so, because we still have to, even if it's not consent, we have to wait-
Okay.
-to get the contract signed until after that, um, and in, and I just looked at my notes too, and I don't wanna, uh, misspeak, but directly to your question, when you asked when it would be done, we did allow for a total of six months' construction time.
So this could carry into-
So it could carry over into next year.
First quarter.
And if we did, it would probably something mechanically-
Well, you just hold, because this is something where they bring it in and get it done in a week, in theory, so, okay, cool, I just wanna make sure we're not holding anything up.
Yep, should be good.
Sounds good.
Yeah, 'cause they still need, we still have to vote on it, right?
Correct.
Either way.
Yep.
All right, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Rushlow.
You're welcome, thank you.
Now we turn our attention to the Engineering Department, item number thirteen is a request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement, coming to us from the Engineering Division from Livonia West Commerce Center Two LLC, in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for the property developed east of Hagerty Road, south of Schoolcraft Road, in the N one-half section, north half section of Section Thirty, and the address is one-three-one-zero-zero Echols, Mr. Zalinsik.
Thank you, Madam President, for saving the best for last, I just wanted to let-
Absolutely.
You know, uh, this is a housekeeping issue, the last parcel out at Amerheim and Echols that was developed, uh, we're just looking to get your approval for stormwater maintenance now that it is complete, and it's been reviewed by our ASBILTS, and I look forward to your approval so we can send on to Wayne County for, um, recording, thank you.
Counsel?
Madam Chair.
Uh, councilman Barr.
I'll offer approving for consent, if there's no objection.
All right, I see no objections from anyone, anyone here in the audience, item number fourteen, a request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement, this comes to us from the Engineering Division for Livonia West Commerce Center Two LLC, in conjunction with the construction of a storm drainage system that provides adequate drainage for the property developed east of, east of Hagerty Road, south of Schoolcraft Road, in the north half section of Section Thirty, and this is one-two-nine-five-zero Echols.
Again, this is the parcel from Ashy Capital, uh, that was, uh, done at the corner of Echols and Amerheim, the same thing, just looking to finally accept the stormwater agreement, hopefully, uh, throughout the course of the, uh, future years, they'll maintain it, if not, gives us the opportunity to go on the property and take care of it, and then build a property owner, but, um, as far as past history, we've had no issues, so we're looking forward to continued, uh, uh, you know, expertise as far as continuing with them, doing their own maintenance, and, uh, getting this back, uh, to them, sign, sign-exude agreement, and record it at Wayne County, thank you.
Counsel? Councilmem- councilmember Morgan?
Yeah, I'll offer an approving for consent.
All right, any objections, any discussion from anyone here in the audience, seeing none, item number fifteen, request for consideration of a proposed ordinance amendment, this comes to us from the Engineering Division to add chapter twenty-two, to add, to add chapter twenty-two stormwater management to Title Thirteen of the Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, and city councilmembers, this has been a long time coming, as you know, Wayne County adopted the stormwater ordinance back on September of twenty-twenty-one, and as part of that, uh, adoption, they were looking for communities to ensure for their MS four permit, which allows, uh, cities and communities to discharge their stormwater into, um, uh, the creeks and streams, for us to have a, a ordinance on place, uh, with that, um, Doug Moore with ARC worked hand-in-hand, uh, with their, um, folks to help us, uh, provide a template, which, uh, appreciate, uh, Mike Fisher doing the heavy lifting, provide this ordinance to the city, as you know, it's a complicated, um, issue with stormwater, uh, some, some stormwater, uh, lines are under our jurisdiction that relinquished from Wayne County back in nineteen-eighties and previous years, and some are under their jurisdiction, so when a, when a, area's developed or redeveloped, uh, typically, we, we request them to go to Wayne County first to determine if, if it's under their jurisdiction, in which they issued a M permit, uh, for the stormwater, um, uh, design, if not, some that are under our jurisdiction, we have a standard template for agreement that we, we bring to you, such as, was, was, which was done for, uh, I think, uh, the previous items, but again, the, the whole goal is to make sure that, uh, we have an exhibit that shows where the stormwater, uh, facilities are at, that they are maintained, if not, that we have the ability to go on that property, to do that work, and obviously, the other part of this ordinance is to make sure that they don't elicit, discharge sediment into our lakes and streams and creeks, because obviously, uh, we wanna make sure we have maintained stormwater quality in our, in our, uh, areas, we wanna make sure there's no log jams, reduce the log jams, reduce the erosion in our city, obviously, it's important for us to protect our residents' homes and, and the water fairs throughout the city, so with us detaining, treating, and then restricting the outfall of that stormwater, as you saw in Texas, unfortunately, they had a thousand-year storm there, and I, I feel really bad for those folks down in Texas that have nine inches of rain within an hour, um, a thousand-year flood, but we do our part, you know, when a, in a parcel comes in for redevelopment, or a new subdivision comes in for development, that we make sure we maintain a detention or underground detention, and then it's restricted into either the county drain or the city drain, so this ordinance will now shore up, uh, that requirement, and give a kinda, um, examples and guidelines for that, along with making sure we meet our MS four permit that, uh, Ms. Gabrielle's been working tirelessly on to get approval through Eagle, so that we can, uh, have a MS four permit approved, along with a stormwater ordinance, and I would ask, in the future, if it does get approved, that we can do the emergency, um, and action if possible, to help get it back to Eagle, so that we are, uh, in good compliance with them, as obviously, we've been taking time to get to the right, um, ordinance with the help of Mr. Fisher and the Law Department, appreciate all their efforts.
Before I go to counsel, I just wanna ask Mr. Zalinsik to, uh, so will you please just, um, for, for those people aren't familiar with the ac- acronym, um, tell us what Eagle is, and that's E-G-L-E.
Yes, Eagle, uh, so Eagle is the Environment of Great Lakes and Environment, or Energy, and, um, and obviously, before, they were the M D, M D E Q, Michigan Department of Environment Quality, and when Gretchen Whitmer took over as governor, she changed that, uh, name to, in the, uh, Michigan En- Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, uh, Department.
Thank you, but it's still Michigan, it's still Michigan State Agency-
Understoring.
-which has jurisdiction over us and our environmental-
That is correct, we wanna follow, follow, make sure we're in compliance.
Thank you, I just wanted to-
Thank you.
-clarify that, and, um, one other thing, when you ask for emergency provisions, are you talking about an exa- ex item for an agenda, or?
Just the, uh, reading for a second and possibly-
Got it.
You know what I mean, uh, expediting the readings if possible.
Got it.
Again, I'm not, I just-
Understood.
I know it's, it's been took a long time to get to this point, and I, and again, I can't emphasize the effort behind the Law Department to get to this point, so appreciate your efforts-
All right.
-to move it along.
Okay, thank you.
You got a question, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, Mr. Barr.
First of all, Todd, thank you for that explanation, I have read through a good portion of this and tried to follow what's going on, and your explanation there helped to clear up a number of things for me, one question I have, um, and there's a lot here, so, I, I'm not necessarily looking to, hopefully, this isn't too painful to ask, but from what I can gather, a lot of what, it, it appears that a, a lot of what this ordinance is doing is giving us power to regulate things, that if we don't do this, the county would regulate, is that an accurate assessment, or am I misreading that?
I, I think it's always been out there, stormwater ordinance has been in effect since two thousand and seven, I think some people had the opportunity to adopt it back, way back when, and, and some people, um, just chose to use Wayne County ordinance, we were, we're kinda unique because we have two separate jurisdictions, right, most people are townships like Kent or Norfolk Township, where they would just adopt a stormwater ordinance from Wayne County, we, we have to be, walk a tightrope here, right, we wanna make sure we, we wanna follow the Wayne County ordinance, but also understand that some are under our jurisdiction, and our, our goal is to just, one, be in compliance with Eagle, two, make sure that we have the proper permits in order for Wayne County, if, if it's under their jurisdiction through the M permit, or our standard agreement that we have, that we bring to City Council, and three, if they do not follow the law, then we would work with Fish, Mike, or the Law Department to do a five hundred dollar fi- uh, you know, violation fine or ninety days in jail, for people that may not take, you know, heed to the, the, uh, ten- a ten of this, is to make sure that, again, we're trying to improve the water quality throughout our city.
The template for this, you mentioned the template for this law language, is that provided by Eagle, or is that-
Uh, we worked with ARC, and Doug Moore worked with, uh, Annette over there to help us get us some languages or some examples to utilize, to streamline this template, uh, that would fit our, our mold, um, so I, again, the, being a partner with ARC helped us try to get this ordinance in place, but refine it for our, our community, which, again, is unique.
And explain to me again what the reason is that you're requesting the emergency clause when we get to that point?
Again, this was requested probably back in March, and it just has taken us much time to get to- time to get to do, you know, all the changes in the ordinance itself, and they requested it a long time ago, and, and as you know, with everything going on, we were trying to wait till Wayne County approved theirs back in September and see how it would play out for other communities. And again, we worked with ARC to get a template in March, and then get to this point where we're at today.
And so just to make sure I'm clear on the procedure, the emergency clause, I believe,